Okay, let's call the order of this February 28th meeting of the Montpelier Planning Commission. First, we have to approve the agenda. So when you're ready, we'll take a motion for that.
We gotta move that we approved the agenda.
Second. Second from Jeff, a motion from Gabe, does favor of approving the agenda, say hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. Agenda approved with our four-person quorum. Okay, so comments from the chair, there's a few things here and the first thing is the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission representative. I explained it in the email earlier just to prep you guys, because I didn't want to drop it, like put anyone on the spot. But the background here is that planning commissions typically send a representative to the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission for the meetings whenever there's something to be voted on at the Regional Planning Commission level. We have a vote, so our representative would just would vote for Montpelier. The person who does this isn't very really controlled at all by the city or the planning commission. You kind of use your own judgment. It's a monthly meeting. Most of those meetings involve presentations and and just explanations of of things going on from the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission staff. If you want to know about like planning in Vermont, it's a big thing that Vermont does. It's all under statute, as I'm sure you guys probably know. So Marcel has been our representative for several years now. I don't know if it's been three or four or what it has, whatever it's been. I was represented before that for a year and a half, two years. My understanding is that these things normally rotate. And so Marcel has probably been. Well, she's been, she's been great in in doing this duty for us, but but it's been a long time for her now. Is that, I mean, you're interested in in rotating off, right, Marcelo?
Yeah. Do you mind if I add to your description of the?
Yeah, yeah, actually, I wanted to, I wanted to turn it over to you because you're the most, you know, you're the most recent experience with it. So go for it.
Thanks, and I think I've only, we're probably close to two years, it's not been much longer than that, but so it's, and you know, I don't know if this is just me getting kind of pulled into things, but it's not. I would, it's not a minor time commitment. And that's my, where I'm starting to run into issue here and, you know, if it were just up to me, I would almost want us to think about splitting the work, because it just seems like too much for one person, unless you don't have other things going on. But essentially, you know, every, so we are representative as Montpelier to the CVRPC, and those monthly board meetings are not that big of a lift. It's again, interesting presentations, things to vote on. I think they're going to be starting to take up the regional plan. Rewrite kind of like we are doing with the city plan here soon. So that that part is fine, but what is becoming more challenging for me is that everyone is expected to serve on at least one subcommittee as well. And there are a lot of different subcommittees. And currently, I am on the executive, I or Montpelier is on the executive committee. And within the executive committee, there are also additional subcommittees. And there has not been a lot of leeway to decline participating in those things for for time constraints. So you know, those start to become more challenging. That's another meeting every month plus additional meetings when special things come up. So, you know, the the place where we're at, where Montpelier is at, because I consider myself a stand-in for Montpelier, is we're in the CVRPC, we're on the executive committee, and there's a nominating committee that happens every year that fills people into these many roles on the subcommittees. And those, you know, there's a committee that does that work as well. And, you know, it's one person from the executive committee fills that role. And they're really, you know, the meeting that we had was kind of like, well, these three people have already been on it, and oh, Marcel is the new person, so she's just gonna, it's like by default, kind of. So.
So Marcel, I have a, I have a clarifying question for you, though. Have you confirmed that that a new person stepping in will be automatically assigned to the same subcommittees as you?
No, I haven't confirmed, that's what we did when I stepped in.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't think, I don't, I don't think that, I don't think that's automatic. Like, I, it didn't happen to me when I joined.
Oh, it didn't, well, yeah, I just assumed because I assumed of us is sort of just the Montpelier representative.
And I think I was on some just like random subcommittee that actually never met as long as I was there. So that's one reason why I maybe, you know,
undersold.
undersold the responsibility, because I kind of.
I recall that.
I managed, I managed to evade, well, I personally managed to evade all the stuff you're talking about, so.
I did not manage to evade it at all. So this is why I'm saying I think we should split the duties, but like, I mean, you know, I don't, I don't really, I don't really know.
Someone served on a subcommittee but not be on the main executive committee?
That's, I mean, that would be the way to break it up, right?
I imagine the executive committee is probably the most work-intensive one. There's other ones, there's, there's, there are some really minor ones as well.
Yeah.
It sounds really interesting. I mean, my, my only thought is, I mean, I'm brand new. It seems like you'd want to have a handle on where the city's going before you try to represent the city a little bit, so.
I was brand new. I was brand new when I started.
The, the, the tradition actually is more like akin to hazing than for.
Oh, yeah?
It's usually, it's usually newer people joining in, and then you have this steep learning curve. But then you, it helps you, it does help you catch up. I mean, would you agree with that, Marcelo, that all the stuff that you learn about there, it kind of rounds out your knowledge of?
Marcel, what's your, what's your sort of hour per week or month commitment?
Per month, the the board meetings are two hours. The exec committee are two hours, and then for the last few months, we've been having like an extra one here and there, so. Yeah, plus the nominating stuff has been a little bit extra, so it's it's at least four a month, and then sometimes it's been getting up into a couple, I guess, a couple of months in the last six. It's been getting up into probably eight.
Wow. Well, thank you for your service, a lot of time.
It's not that I dislike it, I'm not, I don't, I feel like I'm, I'm not moderating my tone super well tonight. I'm, I feel like I'm coming off as very complaining. It's not, I am just, I'm coming off of a week of it being very intense. And I'm feeling, quite honestly, overwhelmed and like I'm not doing anybody a service by participating. The sort of half level that I've been able to participate over the last couple of weeks, so. I mostly wanted to use this time as like, let's figure out an exit strategy or like a time, like load share strategy for me so that I feel like I'm gonna be able to make it.
Yeah, so, so we can, we can talk about that, and I think there is some room, because we have more than one representative at a time. I guess I'd have to ask Mike, like, can we have three? Because Mike's by default an alternative.
Mike's the alternative, yeah.
And but can we have another alternative? Do you know that, Mike?
I don't think that's the way they're structured, but I mean, there's, there's also ways of not having me be as the backup if we had a second, if we had another alternate, if we had two people who wanted to be on it to share the duties, because I really, I've covered for Marcelo when she can't make it, but I haven't really been sharing the load at all with her by taking other committees. So it really just comes down to the amount of the amount of hours in the, in the week for me.
Yeah, I would think.
It's volunteering for, for you guys is volunteering, and for me, it doesn't turn out that way, which is good for me, but also takes away from other stuff that I should be putting my time towards.
Yeah, I, so, so what I'm hearing from you, Mike, is you'd be okay if we had two planning commissioners, like if we had a planning commissioner as the alternate, and then they would could fill in. So, so that, that's an option. Before we go on with that, though, I did want to mention that the, the staff there is really good. Bonnie, the executive director, is a really good person to know. She's extremely knowledgeable about all things planning.
Yeah, she's good. They've had a lot of turnover, a lot of new staff, actually.
I'd be interested in in helping, I just, I can't take on six or eight hours a month. That's, I mean, I've got other part positions and things I'm doing. So, so Marcel, I can, I could help like on a committee or something, or I could be a backup, or we could get a new slate of people in there, but I just, I couldn't do eight hours, that's a lot.
Yeah.
You could, you could, you guys could do something like if, if Marcel is like in her groove doing the executive committee, maybe she could stick with that, and then you could handle the regular meetings and.
Right, yeah, I mean, if they're, if they're immutable to that, I don't know. I don't know if it matters, I mean.
I'd have to ask, I haven't, I haven't.
I think, I, I think they would be, it's just that you'd be there as the alternate, and that is a distinction they make, so like.
Oh, true.
Would you be able to survive that way, Marcelo, if, if you didn't have to go to the other ones?
It would, yeah, it would probably help, yeah, and then maybe. Well, yeah, I feel like I've probably, you know, with not, I, I think the particular combination of stuff that I've roped myself into here is probably particularly demanding. I think they're probably gonna, I mean, I think the general gist is that the executive committee serves one more year. So in July, when they flip everything to kind of the new committee rotations, theoretically, I would stay on, but I may step off and get on, you know, do a different committee.
I mean, that, that could be a plan where, once you're off the executive committee, transition out, maybe then Gabe could become the main person if he's still interested, and then he could join the less demanding committees.
And that's actually gives me time to walk myself out of like some other stuff, so.
Yeah.
And there may be others, I don't know, it sounds like, it sounds like you have a primary and an alternate, and then Mike would be like a secondary alternate, right? That's kind of what I'm hearing, that's kind of the norm. And so if, if at some point, Marcel, if you step back, then, then I, we would need to find somebody else who's also interested, Jeff. If it's the, if this is the new guy thing, right, like, you know, because and the other thing is, and I don't know, Kirby, you probably know too, Marcel, are there, is there an ability? Do we have to be on every one of those subcommittees? Is it essential that Montpelier is on every one of those? Or is that just Kirby kind of set this course, and then you slipped into it, and so now we have a lot of?
No, I, I was not on the executive, I mean, that's.
You don't have to be on the executive, but my understanding is you are expected to be on a subcommittee. And, you know, for various reasons, people pick the ones they're more interested, like I did not volunteer for the executive committee.
That's four, that's four hours a month, right? You, you do the two-hour regular meeting, and then a subcommittee, some subcommittee work.
I'm, I would speculate that maybe Marcel, you were pressured into it because Montpelier is a bigger town.
Highly suggested, yeah, that I joined that.
Yeah, and they do that, like Waterbury, Montpelier, Berry are like more pushed into that.
Yeah, which is, and it's, it's, it is interesting, it's a good opportunity, it's just, I'm just finding that I'm having a hard time keeping up.
Yeah, and you, you can look, Marcel, also at talking to them about getting off the other subcommittee. If it, if it turns out it's like, look, the work demand is, time demand is too much for where I'm at in my career right now, I'll stay on the executive committee and go to the executive committee stuff. Gabe is gonna go once a month to the, to the general board meeting, and that means you don't have to go to the general board meeting, and so he would have the alternate at the general board meeting for those things and get to see all those presentations. And, you know, if you choose to go, you always can, but.
Yeah.
You just go to the executive committee, you can tell them, look, I just don't have the time to be on nominating committee or some of these other ones. And, and sometimes if you push, give a little bit of a pushback, they'll, they'll give you some, some space.
Yeah.
Because the last thing you want to do is to go and get somebody who's been there for four years, or six years, or eight years, and kind of learned everything, and then just kind of get burned out and, and leave. They would rather keep people around for a while.
Yeah, right.
So I think sometimes you're just like, look, when I got on this, I was in this place, but, you know, you've finished your master's degree, you've got, you know, you're chunking along through stuff that, you know, you're, not everybody has time to do four hours of planning commission, and then another four hours of CVRPC, plus another two hours of subcommittees, and, you know, next thing you know, you're working part of a full-time job.
I know, it's like, seriously, right?
Just volunteering on stuff.
You just added up like 12, 15 hours, I mean, that's, that's a pretty significant time commit. Would you want to, do you mind maybe to the whole group, Marcel, could you just send around like the schedule? So I could see it, and then maybe others who might be interested can see like, okay, this is the regular meeting schedule?
Yeah, absolutely.
Second Tuesdays is the board meeting, so.
Second Tuesdays, what, what time is it?
Six thirty to eight thirty.
Six thirty to eight thirty, yeah.
Yeah, oh, and, and they are still, everything is still remote, which has been an enormous help, for sure, but I don't think they're planning to go back in person anytime soon.
Oh, I was gonna tell them about the pizza, but I guess that's not happening.
There was, there used to be pizza, yeah.
Used to be, used to be free.
I don't need, I don't need the pizza, but that's a.
Yeah, I don't, I guess, I don't know, things are starting to, you know, move that way, but nobody's really talked about it. And last time, we were sort of in this lull where case counts were coming down, and we were thinking maybe we'd start to go back. Nobody was like super jazzed about it, so I, I don't, I would be surprised if they rushed back to in person, so that helps. From a time perspective.
Okay, so will you guys, will you guys, like, do me a favor and just like email each other and work it out offline? And then just like loop Mike in so that we can change the designation if that's where you guys land?
Yeah, we can do that, so does it have to be like, from, you guys have to nominate? Like, if I were to be the alternate, it has to be action by the planning commissioners here, or how does that work?
It's actually by the city council.
City council.
In April, the city council wants to, so they've got the new elections tomorrow. We'll know who the new, not the new mayor, but we'll know who wins the mayor and a couple of the other council seats. Then they start going through appointments, so usually it's either the second meeting in March or the first meeting in April. The city council sits down and elects a slate. Most of those are appointments of city councilors to city council things, like who's gonna be on, on this board or that board, and who's gonna, you know, I think we've got seats on certain boards in the community, and so they get into them.
So we've got a couple of weeks.
Yeah, one of the appointments that comes in at that time is who's, who gets appointed to the Regional Planning Commission.
Okay.
Some, some towns will send select board members. In Montpelier's case, for the eight years I've been here, it has always been a planning commissioner that has been appointed. A planning commissioner and, and the alternate were both either from, usually, since I've been here, I've always been the alternate. And there's always been a planning commissioner that has sat in that seat, so we usually nominate.
I like the idea of having an, an alternate, you know, I mean, I think it's a good system, right? Like, somebody's kind of your understudy, Marcelo, right? They can kind of shadow and watch what you're doing, and then be ready to step up when, you know, you want to step down.
I like the idea.
It looks like she has a load, I feel bad, look at her, like, can't you see it? It's like, oh, man.
She's been great, she's been great.
If we get into a pinch, I can always, I can always step in, I just can't vote, but a lot of times I've been to enough of these meetings that, you know, if, if, if there was a conversation, we had to have, what's the Montpelier's position on this project, you know, I will speak up and say, hey, this is our position, this, or this is my position as the city planner for the city of Montpelier. I don't have a vote tonight, but, you know, here's where I would go on it if I did have a vote. And sometimes that carries some weight for some, some other commissioners. Just because I've been meeting with that board for a long time, I was on the board, so I've been here for eight years. Before that, I was five years in Berry City. When I was in Berry City, they never could find another person to seat, so I actually was the representative from Berry City for, for the five years I was there, so. They're very familiar with me over there, I've been doing this long enough. And I, my first job in regional planning was working for Northwest Regional Planning in 2000, where I worked in the same office as Bonnie. Bonnie and I worked, you know, one, we were in, both worked for the Regional Planning Commission, and she was the next desk over. So I've known Bonnie for more than two decades now.
Well.
Yeah, we haven't had too many situations where the vote in the big board is stuff that is like that, about like a project opinion, or we just haven't, we just really haven't had that many of it. There is a project review committee that would be problematic for me to be on anyways because of my work work, but yeah, it just hasn't, it hasn't seemed to be quite that specific about like Montpelier needing to have a real strong opinion about something. Anyways, I can send the, I'll send an email with the schedule stuff and the link, and you can check it out.
Okay, yeah, great. Yeah, thank you, thank you, Gabe, thanks, Mike. Yeah, I was gonna say earlier, I like the idea of, of Mike not being the alternate, just because it lets him focus on planning work for the city more. So this could, this could be like a good, a good system. Okay, so you guys, you guys work on that and just loop us in if you land on something, and then we'll get the, Mike will, Mike will be able to get the information to the city council when it comes time to appoint. Okay, so there was another thing I was gonna bring up at the, the comments. Both these things, like, actually, I should give credit to Marcela for, for bringing them up as, as good things to go over. She had mentioned doing a city plan overview, so I went ahead and took, took a look at where we're at. So just, just to give everyone an update and what to expect, sort of like short roadmap. We have finished, more or less, the historic resources, energy, housing, natural resources, and transportation chapters. A lot of those are big ones, so that's, that's great. We're finishing up economic development now, which is another big one, so that, that'll be, that'll be great. What we have left is, there's, there's two groups. There's, there's three chapters that are mostly going to come from city staff. There are community services, which is, which basically means parks from my understanding, public safety, and utilities. So those are all three chapters that are gonna have a lot of input from city staff, the different, you know, divisions within the city staff. So I'm, I'm guessing they're not gonna be a huge lift for us unless we really, for some reason, want to tinker with a lot of that. It's gonna should be a lot of review stuff for us there. And then there's gonna be two that's mostly on us. There's the land use chapter, which is, which is the city planning stuff, so like that's obviously on us to, to do all that work. And then there's the, we decided to do an optional chapter on arts and culture. So that's gonna be, since that's, since that's new, and there's, there's not a pre-existing committee or something devoted to that, then we're just gonna have to take that on. At this point, I'm thinking it's gonna probably be pretty small. We just, it's, it's gonna be the, you know, something to build on later, maybe, and we'll just get it going. And we, we have some ideas, and I think, like, over a year ago, a year and a half ago, I, I drafted some, some things that we could work, that we could develop and, and use for that. So those are the big ones as far as I can see from from the work we have online right now. Mike, are there any other categories or chapters that I'm missing?
No, those are the ones that are still left out there. I mean, we had some other optional ones, but I, I just gonna try to focus on, on getting these final chapters punched out so we can start to get this rolling towards its conclusion. Because I, I would like to continue to use, continue to do the city plan in the same manner that we're doing the zoning, which is not to wait every eight years and do massive updates, but rather, once we get done with the city plan, that we can go back next year or two years from now and start addressing specific items. You know, and then we can spend a year, you know, for example, this year homelessness and housing is an issue. You know, we might go through and say, hey, we've got, we've got our city plan, it's all done, it's all approved, it's all sitting on the web. Let's go back and see, work with the housing committee and the homelessness task force, and, and see if we're doing enough, and see if we need to make adjustments to that plan. And then make those adjustments, re-adopt the plan, and then, you know, the next year, maybe energy issues, maybe, you know, you just never know what, what pops up. And maybe it's create a new, a new chapter, because something, you know, maybe in 2020, we would have decided, hey, you know, we need a public health plan. But I think that's, that's the way I'd like to look at this going forward. And I think once the city plan is done, and we've got all the 10, 12 chapters done, I think it'll make a lot more sense and be a lot easier to, to move this, advance this forward. I will say, you know, Dan's here at the, at the meeting tonight, too. The community services is really, it's parks, recreation, senior center, Green Mount Cemetery, solid waste, childcare, social and community and economic justice committee, homelessness, those are all in the community services. And so I'm working with Dan to, to develop the implementation strategies for, because we already got parks, so we're gonna work on recreation, senior center, and the cemetery over the next couple of months. And then Cameron, who is our assistant city manager, is gonna work on the, the other pieces that are in there, the social and economic justice, the homelessness. And, and then there's also a possibility of the Community Justice Center. They've, they've actually kind of requested to be under community services rather than under public safety. We're, we're still gonna talk about that one, has to be done, it's just, you know, we've had this question before, where do we put X, Y, and Z, you know?
Why are, why are they asking, do you, do you know?
While some of their work is based on, you know, offender and victim relations and those types of things, they also have a lot of community, you know, mediation and other services that they provide. And so they kind of wanted to make sure that they were understood as a service that's, that's broader than just its offender programs that they have.
Yeah, that, what gives me pause about that is that it's something we have going on that is an alternative to your traditional criminal justice, law and order stuff. And if we separate it out, it's not looking like an alternative anymore, and you're just making public safety just police, which seems like maybe not the best direction, but.
We're, we're gonna set up meetings. It was, you know, the communication that we had, just as I introduced this to leadership team, that was one of the responses I got was, was, you know, maybe we should look at it in this way. So we're gonna sit down with, with Carol, who's the, the director, and the assistant city manager, and me, and we're gonna sit down and we're gonna have a conversation about, because a lot of things can fall under multiple places. Where do you put childcare? You know, we're here talking in economic development about how important childcare is, but, you know, it's a community service and public, or, public transportation. Public transportation is a community service.
Yeah.
But do we put it under transportation, or do we put it under community services? And we have a number of these that can fall into two places, and sometimes it's a matter of finding out what's the most appropriate place. And community justice, I don't know, we'll have that conversation, and, you know, the, the director will make her recommendation. Everything, of course, you know, when it gets to you is your decision. You guys have lumped and split it and disagreed with committees in the past, and that's fine. And eventually, we'll have a public hearing and have a public process, and then this will get voted to city council, and then they can move and shuffle things as they see fit. So I think we just do the best we can. You know, we'll draft things up as, as staff and as departments, and we'll see where they go. And then you guys have the ability to push and pull them around. I guess the, the other pieces, while we're talking a little bit about schedule and timing of things, I'll point out that I have an RFP ready to go, I'm just waiting until Wednesday for the, the hire a consultant to help us develop the web. For the, the higher consultant to help us develop the web. So I think Gabe and Jeff, I think I mentioned to you guys, we're gonna do a kind of a web-based city plan. It'll be the first one in the state. Been done around the country. They're really much more popular, much more accepted. Nobody in Vermont has done one, so we're gonna be the first. And we applied for some grants and we didn't get them. So the city council has put in the city budget to simply fund hiring somebody to help us do this. So as soon as Tuesday's vote is over, assuming the budget has passed, I will get that RFP out and hopefully we can start hearing back. On, on that piece. And that'll be another piece. It's, it's looking at eighteen month window, so we would get them on board in time for, let's say, May, June time period. And then try to have them on for till twenty twenty-three to help us basically build out the, the ten. Web pages and the storyboards and the chapters we've been writing and the implementation strategy we've, we've been putting together. We can then build out. What our plan is going to look like to the public. So that would be another piece, just, you know, so anything that isn't done right now, obviously, you know, my office is gonna have to front load. Anything that's not done, so we can start getting this stuff forward. To start populating these websites. And whatever ones that the planning commission is gonna be working on, like land use. You know, in arts and culture, we can always keep that as a placeholder. And if we get time to get to it, that's great. If we don't, it may be one that we simply say. After the plan's adopted, we wanna do this as our next plan, as our next one, and then we'll add it in, but. We wanna focus on the statutorily required pieces to make sure we've got all those ready to go. And that's why economic development, community services, energy, historic, housing, land use, natural resources. Transportation, utilities and facilities, public safety, those are all kind of required pieces.
So, so, okay, given, assuming that we do squeeze in arts and culture. I, I, for one thing, I, I see that as one that if we're waiting for. If we're waiting to get the materials from those three that I mentioned that we're relying on city staff. If, if for some reason there's a delay there, that's something we can work on in the meantime. So that's kind of how I see it.
Yep.
So, so we have five left. Two, two of them are things under our control. For the timing. If we try to be conservative and give ourselves, I don't know if this is conservative, but like five or six months. Does that work for you, Mike, and work for everyone here?
Yeah, I mean, I guess from my perspective, yes, we can, you know, my goal would be to have all of the chapters done and. Ready for our. Our consultant. So the consultant's gonna first have to build out a template and start doing all these pieces in the template. And those things might not be ready until, say, September. And then they'll start populating it and we'll keep shoveling information at them. And they'll keep populating it and hopefully get ready for some amount of beta testing and outreach. Because the idea is we have to build the website and then we have to start doing some outreach. And my hope, my plan in the back of my mind is that we can have all these chapters done by December, so they're all in the website because we really can't do public. Input around Christmas, you know, pretty much Thanksgiving to New Year's is, is DOA if you're trying to do any outreach. So we're, I'm thinking, starting next January, we would have populated websites with kind of these beta versions. Of all the webpages that we can start going to the public with and start having outreach. Start testing things, start hearing back from people. What do they think? What do they like? We have to keep the consultant on because in that time, we're gonna get input. We're gonna wanna make adjustments and edits and changes. It's not unlike our zoning process here where. We're gonna be jumping, jumping around on things. But the hope is that by June, we've pretty much nailed it down. It may not be adopted by city council. We may not have all of our public hearings. You know, I would love it. I think it'd be great if we could. You know, have public hearings for three months. And then turn it over to city council and have this adopted by next June. That would be awesome, but I'm a realist and I know. A document of this size and of this scope is gonna, it's gonna draw attention and it's going to, and it's not, not bad. You know, I, I sound like I'm grousing a little bit about getting public input. I'm, I'm not. It, it is hard when, when you do fourteen, fifteen, sixteen months of public hearings. But you do end up with a good product. I do wanna get a lot of public input, but I do hope that we can. Keep it in a manageable place where we, where we've, and I think if we find a good. A good balance in what we're presenting, I don't think there'll be a lot of controversy. Usually where you have a lot of meetings and a lot of stuff is when we're proposing things that are gonna be particularly controversial. And I think. Where committees have come to us with some ideas that might be a little bit more. Controversial. I think we've, we've brought them back a little bit at the planning commission here. So I think, I think it's in a good place, but you never know. You know, you, you propose a, a moderate housing plan and you'll get beat up for not being progressive enough. And if you make a progressive plan, then you'll get. Beat up for not, for, for not being moderate enough. So we're not gonna make everybody happy, so we'll, we'll. Do our best to kind of come up with a good plan that we think we can stand behind as a, as a planning commission. And then just let it see how it goes. But my hope is to really have a good plan that is actionable and. Strategic and the website is a good outreach, that we get more people involved than actually seeing the plan. I don't expect everybody in the city to read the plan. But it would be nice to have a, a city plan that's accessible, that's online. That people are more likely to pick it up in a Google search if they're trying to figure out what's up with housing in Montpelier. They might actually Google. Montpelier housing and get a link to our, our webpage, which has a description of. What housing is, why it's important, what are the issues here in Montpelier and what are we proposing to do about it?
Okay, so that, that all sounds like it adds up pretty well. If we're, if we're thinking the consultant's gonna get, get started in September, then. It seems like we're definitely on pace to deliver what they need by then. So.
It certainly puts us under the gun. We certainly have to.
Yeah.
Anymore. We've got deadlines. We have to get stuff to them. We've got a consultant on board who we're paying. So, you know, it's time for us to, to. Put pendulum, get this, get this out and get it done to them and then. Follow up.
See, yeah, so it sounds like it's, it's. Like, like the pace that we've had so far, I think is, is good for, for meeting that deadline. So we'll just, we just gotta keep at it. We have a huge delay with the zoning update stuff in the middle there, but. You know, we're not gonna have anything like that again. So, so it should be good. Does anyone have any questions or concerns about the timeline and? Okay.
No, no concerns, but um, I just wanted to say I was glad. Mike was talking about a good, robust public process because, you know, I know we can't. Like, it's impossible to please everyone with the plan, but I think one of the ways we can measure success. Is by like how thoughtful of a job we do with the public engagement process and making sure that it is really transparent and. Uh, we have lots of opportunities for people to comment and we consider those things and it's, and that is a good process. I appreciate that. Looking forward to, to that piece of it.
Yeah, and speaking of public process, um, do we have, do we have the memo explaining those, the zoning amendments posted anywhere yet?
I, I haven't. That was what I had emailed you about. I don't know, it was at the end of the email, just to say, you had said you had a couple of comments. And so I was just waiting to see if you had them. Otherwise, I'll just go and take it as it was and.
Okay, yeah, sorry about that. Now that you mention it, yeah, I was, I was actually on vacation when I received that and flipped my mind. Yeah, I mean, I didn't, I didn't have anything. Big. I mean, if you've, if you've like proofed it, then just go for it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll proof it one more time. The rest of it. All of those documents I emailed to Audra, who does my web stuff in my office. Um, I emailed them to her this afternoon. Um, she's not in tomorrow because it's meeting day. But she'll be back Wednesday to get those posted online. The public hearing notices will be going out for that, so it is warned for March twenty-third and April thirteenth. So if anyone's watching on Orca or. Online, the zoning amendments, that's when the hearings will be at, at city council. So it's already been approved at the planning commission. It's going to city council. That's when they're gonna have their hearings. They will all be posted by the end of this week. Online, um, which you can get to on the, from the front page of the city website, so.
Okay, yeah, great. Yeah, keep us, keep us posted, Mike, and do you? I'm, I'm kind of of two minds about whether like, like, like me personally attending the city council meetings is a good idea or not, like. Like, I don't feel a need to, to have like this image that we're trying to like push anything. So in some ways, like not being there. Is fine because our memos kind of speaks for us. But at the same time, I don't want the plant, the city council to think that we're absent either.
I, I think it would be helpful to have somebody there.
Okay.
It's gonna be two, two extra meetings. It would be helpful, especially if questions come up on that. The one proposal you guys came up with to remove residential densities. I will always do my best to, to, to defend and, you know, kind of give the reasoning for it. But considering in the memo, I say I'm opposing it to, because I think it should wait. It might be helpful to have somebody there who's, you know, kind of willing to step up and champion that to go through and say, this is, this is why and, and give it the. The oomph that it deserves from, from your perspective, whether that's you or.
Sure. Okay, I'll plan to do that. You said March twenty-third and April sixth?
Uh, April thirteenth.
Oh, thirteenth, okay. Okay. So I'll, I'll put that on my calendar, plan to do that. Okay, that's, that's it for the comments. Does anyone have anything else before we move on? Okay. So we have general business comments from the public. Um, I don't think no one from the public is here and, and no one's. Live with Mike there, so. We'll go on to the next item on the agenda after that, which is to continue review the economic development goals and strategies. So let's pull up this, the strategies. I, I don't have any, any, uh, big things myself. Um, I see that. Some things it looks like have been flagged in yellow on here or like this mango color.
To maybe move to other. I had something that even goes further back. I, I think we've kind of settled on some aspirations, but can we just revisit for one minute?
Yeah, I just, but yeah, let's, let's do that. Let's do that right now. I, I was, I was gonna ask Mike a question of those. Just, Mike, was it you who flagged those things to move them to other, the, the certain strategies to move them to other chapters? Or is that someone else?
No, I, I highlighted the ones that are there that talk about. The economic development plan supports the implementation of housing. And my note over on the side is that to use in the chapter, not in the implementation plan.
Okay, so, okay, that was you, okay.
Yeah, we're kind of trying to skip a few steps here because usually a committee puts these things together and then it comes to you guys. You guys go through and say, oh, this doesn't matter. We'll talk about this in the chapter. And then it gets deleted because we don't have that iteration. I just put it in there and highlighted it.
Okay, so yeah, let's go ahead and rewind. On, on Gabe's request and you, you wanted to look at the aspirations again, Gabe?
Yeah, I just got a comment. I think, you know, when I go through the list of ideas, I just keep getting hung, hung up at the top. And I think it has to do with this aspiration too. So if I, if you don't mind, if I could just make some comments from some research that I've done. Just some of my thoughts about it.
Go ahead.
So we've got this idea of Montpelier providing a resilient job market that pays a livable wage. And, you know, so first of all, I mean, just, you know, grammatically, I know we'll probably have some other editing goes on, but. Montpelier's not gonna provide jobs, right? One have a, similar to what we have below. We wanna have a robust economy. That provides those opportunities. But just here's some data. As I went into Department of Labor, uh, and just did some research, so. You know, we, we've, we have an incredible job market here. We have one point six unemployment percent unemployment rate right now, which is really strong. And the state of Vermont put out a study. It's a little dated. It was twenty twenty, but they did a study on living wage. And, you know, depending on your family size, there's some different criteria. But when you go again and you sort of look at the jobs that are available inside of Montpelier and where they're all kind of stratified. You maybe have fifteen to twenty percent where there could be some question about whether people are earning a livable wage. It really has to do with. Service jobs. We're always gonna have service jobs. There's always gonna be people that are in those industries, so. It just makes me wonder if this is really where we should be kind of. Setting up our focus for this goal is this discussion of a livable wage or if we ought to be, I kind of just dropped some language in. Over in D, you know, which somebody else had put some stuff in childcare, transportation. Just saying something very similar and to D, you know, like, we're gonna have this robust local economy. We're gonna, you know, want workforce. Well, we want people to be able to improve. We want people to start businesses here. All right, we have all those things, but should be, really be dialed into this living wage. When it doesn't look like it's our major issue.
I, I agree with, uh, Gabe on the livable wage portion and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but with the resilient job market. Where I was going with that. You know, months ago was, um, not relying on the ebb and flow of the state job market. Uh, making sure that there's other employers and other opportunities there. But yeah, the livable wage stuff strikes me as a bit. Aspirational and fluffy. Um, and I'm someone who's, I, I've read some of that lit and. A livable wage for someone in Berry is different, different than, uh, someone in Montpelier, given the rents. People from both those communities may have jobs in Montpelier. It's kind of a toss-up.
Okay, I think, I think resilient, I'm, I'm cool with resilient too. It's just, as soon as we start talking livable wage, when you start looking at the goal, you know, like. What are our strategies? All of a sudden, we're going down a rabbit hole. It's like, is this really the direction that we wanna go?
I, I would be okay with changing provide to have because I, I take your point that we don't create markets as a city government. And, uh, and then removing the livable wage would be fine with me, too. I, I rewrote it down below, if you guys can see, changing provide to have and taking the livable wage. Is there some, is there any more tinkering we wanna do with that aspiration of looking at it?
So I was the one who added C. And so that really looks at that part that talks about and offers. Sufficient housing and services to members of the workforce. And my suggestion, because it's a little bit iterative, so. We kind of look forward to our goals and then our strategies, and then we kind of walk, walk our way back to the, to the start to go through and say, well. And provides equal access to employment. Through sufficient housing and services, specifically childcare and transportation for all members of the workforce. So. Aspiration A was supposed to kind of talk to our labor side as opposed to our business side. And so. What we need from a labor side in this would be a resilient job market, encourage workforce development. And provide equal access to employment. Through sufficient housing and services, specifically childcare and transportation members to the members.
I think it'd be nice to clip that part of Mike's language and throw it in there. I mean, housing, this is the issue, Jeff, that you, you sort of get to, right, is like. Okay, that's possible, but you can't even. Right, like, maybe they're making the income, but there's not even, they can't even live here, right? Because there is no place to live. And so, you know, and I don't know how we, I, I guess I didn't really dive into the childcare. I don't know how as a city we encourage. More childcare. Clearly, it's a need.
We, we actually provide it. Um, the city's recreation department actually is a licensed childcare provider. And we, since twenty twenty, have been expanding that to.
That's awesome.
Grow it because there, it was such a demand, but.
Mike, Mike, before we move on from, from the childcare thing, um, I just wanna clarify that it's, it's the. The pre-K that's available through Union Elementary. Is that the one you're referring to?
No, I think Union has their own.
Okay.
City has a childcare service that's run by Arnie, um, the, the recreation and recreation director. And they're, one of the things they're talking about with, if, if we get the Elks Club property is they wanted to. And they're one of the things they're talking about with if if we get the Elks Club property is they wanted to build an expanded facility. Along with the recreation facility out on the Elks property because what they don't have is sufficient room to provide. Infant care. We don't have the sufficient size or staffing, so we can only do. Kids over a certain age and during the summer, we run the summer programs and the summer programs are actually designed to be childcare programs to allow. Parents who work to be able to have a place to have their kid to normally would be going to school. That that we have an expanded summer program for that reason.
I'm just curious. I mean, it's it's maybe not like relevant to this goal, but is there? Is there? Is it like the what they pay? Is it somehow income based? Is there some subsidy or is it just market rate?
I don't know. I just know that the market, the the market for childcare hasn't. If if the if the free market were providing enough childcare providers, we wouldn't be doing this.
Yeah, right.
The issue is that there aren't enough childcare providers, and maybe it's because of the, you know, some of the regulatory. Burdens or whatever. I don't I don't know enough to know why we aren't getting enough. Childcare providers other than it's it would cost a lot of money and there's not enough people who can afford it, so not enough people get into it. But there's not enough childcare providers, so it does get subsidized because we're paying. Tax dollars are paying for, you know, Arnie's salary and the salary, some of the people that work there, and then we get some revenues. But I couldn't tell you whether or not it pays for itself.
Is it just the after school program you're talking about?
I don't. I'm getting out a little bit over my skis now to go through and say where exactly how much, but I know we're doing a childcare program and maybe during the school year, it's only after school.
Yeah, I think the rec center thing is after, like, I have a toddler for the record here. That's why I'm informed on this. Well, I don't know. She's four. I don't know if toddlers are work, but but she's, you know, needs pre K stuff. This is this is the landscape as I understand it. Yeah, that's, I think the rec center is an after school program, so that would be to help the school age and help. You know, fill the void of working parents and you need after school care. The the city through Union and through like, I think the education fund, though, not not the general city budget. Provides pre K at Union Elementary. As a parent, I gotta be pretty critical of that. They offer it for. You can have it. You can get it for free subsidized, but but the hours are a few hours a day, either in the morning or the afternoon. And that doesn't work for anyone's work schedule. So like like currently what they're offering there is like it. Doesn't help like. It doesn't actually address like a like full time care need at all.
I mean, I think just this conversation suggests that we ought to lift out some of that language that Mike put in there. And and specifically identify both housing and childcare as a labor issue that we want to work on in this plan.
And it may be that they end up being talked about more in other plans. As we said, the. The childcare will be in the community services chapter and it'll be talked about more in depth in in that chapter. But what's important here is that if if you were to talk to. You know, maybe the social and economic justice committee and start talking about, you know, what are the barriers to employment? For folks, you would generally see people in the lower income. The the three biggest barriers are are housing. Sure, you can get housing. I've got a job in Montpelier and I can live in Barry, you know, but that necessitates transportation. So either I have to have housing, so I'm here. So, you know, as as a single person or as a young person who. Doesn't have all the resources that we have, you know, us, all of us old folks. You gotta have you gotta have transportation, housing and childcare are the three big ones that you'll see as as the barriers. For people who could be in the workforce but aren't. Because of these barriers. And if you were in a place like Atlanta or down in the south, that's where you start having these conversations, especially when you talk about transportation. Why is it that people have jobs, but they have to spend an hour and a half on the bus every day? It's all about transportation. We've got jobs in one place, people living in another, and we don't have a transportation network that connects them. And so it may not be as big an issue here in Montpelier. But for certain people, it's going to be, it's going to be a barrier, maybe not as bad as it is in in some of our metro areas. But it certainly can be significant if you live in Berry City. Which is the second largest community in Vermont without for population of people without cars. So there's a large population of people living in Berry City who don't own cars. And rely in rely entirely on public transportation and they're second only to Burlington. So. It becomes a significant barrier if you happen to be. In that community and some of that comes back to. You know, Berry City has a lot of folks who had been incarcerated and have been released. It's the home of our courthouse. So a lot of people may have had driving violations that got them into trouble. So now they're without a car because, you know, they don't have a license. So. These are a number of of the barriers that people look at. You know, in other communities incarceration can be the a a large barrier. I just found these three were probably the biggest ones from Montpelier that I thought. From a from a workforce standpoint, as you said, one point six percent unemployment, we got to find more workers. You know, what's keeping us from getting more workers? You know, I I would think the three big ones are going to be housing, childcare and transportation. And open to anyone who's an expert and can correct me and say you're missing a a fourth big one or something. These were the three I could find.
No, I think I think you're on the right track there, and I think that. I I I mean, housing and childcare really stand out as just Vermont wide kind of crises. I I don't know what we can what we can do here, but if if we, I mean, I would definitely be up for exploring strategies to bolster the. What the city can do about childcare. Like currently, I think there's a lot of room there, but.
Well, when we get to the strategies, we can talk strategies, but I think at this step, when we're looking at aspirations, you know, I think what you worked on.
Well, if we're going to put in the aspiration, we're going to back it up with strategies is kind of my point there. So, yeah, okay, so. Do we want to put childcare in this?
Mike, can I ask you a quick question? Is is the community services chapter? Which shape is that in? Has it been drafted? I just.
No, we're working on it, working on it right now.
And what's this? And what's the scope of that chapter?
Oh, I just had it pulled up here.
Yeah, we we went over that earlier.
Yeah, so so our community services and we're still it's a little fungible at this point. We've kind of, we already did parks. Because we did parks and we did natural resources. I still have to finish writing it out, but it's we've got most of the workings of that. Then Recreation Senior Center, Green Mount Cemetery. Solid waste. I can't remember solid waste ended up under solid waste may have actually ended up under utilities and facilities, but childcare. Homelessness. We have social and economic justice, so. Dan, who's on the the line here with us, he's going to be working with me on the first three Recreation Senior Center and Cemetery. And then Cameron, who's the Assistant City Manager, is going to be working with me on the other three. So we hope to have by May that I'll have. These, at least the implementation strategies all fleshed out. So we've got something that we can work on in end of May into June.
Great, great. Thanks.
So, I mean, so so with that said. If we're putting childcare in Community Services Chapter. Then that would be a reason not to put it here as part of the aspiration. We would we would reference that other chapter in in the. Chapter language, the narrative part of economic development. But save the strategies for that other chapter. Does that look like the direction that we're going to go?
So we would leave it here in the aspirations, but in when we get to the strategies, we talk about it being implemented in the other place?
No, no, I'm saying I'm saying I don't think it should be in the aspiration here if we don't have strategies for it here. I think that we. But but in the in the narrative chapter language for economic development, we refer to. I mean, at the end of the day, I'd like to see some strategies where where we're more ambitious for childcare, but. Structurally, it sounds like that's the way it should go.
Well, I think it's okay to have it in the aspiration here if it's, you know, I don't. Just my two cents on that. I'm I would be okay with having it in in here and having it referenced later on that it's going to be. Implemented through because otherwise it really doesn't get caught, doesn't get. As people are thinking about it and thinking about economic development, I don't think they're reflecting on it if we're not really.
Yeah, I think, Mike, I think you've identified sort of the holy trinity of the top plan, frankly, and to the extent that we can. You know, put that in another place in every in any place we can in the plan, you know, sort of a thread that binds everything together. I think it's fine leaving it in the aspiration, just. Reference it.
Okay, we can we can do that. I I I thought that in other chapters that we were trying to keep the aspirations like streamlined and and not do that kind of thing, but like it's. It's fine with me.
I I would generally think that's a good way to go, but like I said, I I really think that the three issues that. That Mike just outlined are really the three things that we keep coming back to in every, you know, every discussion we have. So. I think that might be the one place where we can kind of have some repetition across the board, but.
You know, I think flagging things to, you know, I'll tell you, I mean. Just as a voter, Mike, you just flip my like this. I had a particular opinion about this whole golf course thing and you just flipped that all over for me. I didn't. I hadn't seen that piece of it that there was part of was that we could have a childcare center. And, you know, and I'm just one person, right? How how much can we highlight to people so they can understand? That, you know, part of the reason we don't, we can't maybe expand or grow or do things is because we don't have the right services. So, yeah, we're we're not gonna. Have strategies for it, but I think having it is a clear aspiration for our economic development. I think it's great to have here, Kirby.
Okay, so so what we have now, it looks like it looks like Mike added some things. So there's an alternative on line five here for aspiration. This is this is like rewriting aspiration A, and it now says Montpelier will have. Will have not provide a resilient job market, encourage workforce development. And provide equal access to. Employment. Through. Ha sufficient housing and services and then in parentheses, specifically childcare and transportation for all members of the workforce.
Yeah, I like that. Thanks for letting me go back to this. I I just was getting really hung up on the strategy because I just couldn't.
No, I think I think this is great. I think this is, I mean, kind of the point of tonight is to like. Decide what strategy should go in and what shouldn't, like, where should we be focusing? And that's what this is all about. So, okay, so we'll. After the end of our discussion, we'll plan to vote on that aspiration, okay? To change it. Does anybody else have anything on aspirations before we jump into strategies?
I I guess this, I don't know if this is the place to put it, but I was. This is more of a question to Gabe because it sounds like he's given more thought to this than than I have certainly, but. To the extent that there are trickle down effects from changing the aspiration to exclude livable wage piece, I'm just looking at the. Livable wage strategies, and I guess the kind of the. The threshold question I have is like, do you see value in any of those strategies that are the three strategies that are outlined and. Under the livable wage piece and the strategies is like. If this has value to you, or can they be placed somewhere else, or I'm just trying to get.
I think that's the thing is I was having such a hard time. Wrapping my head around it and a one point six percent. I mean, again, I don't know if you heard that part, Aaron, but one point six percent unemployment. And based on state of Vermont numbers, like fifteen to twenty percent of our people are in service jobs where their wages aren't below. But we would consider livable wage. All the rest of the the jobs would be, you know, livable wage. So is that really where we want to focus our energy? And I I and I may be wrong. I mean, you if you want to include it, but it just was, that was the question in my mind is do we really want to spend? Money and energy with limited resources on that when it doesn't appear to be our problem. I think. I think it's it's housing, transportation, childcare. I mean, the stuff might just align. I think that's the real issue. So I don't know. It just seems like we're distracting when we have limited pool of resources. And that was the reason I asked to go back to it because I did. I looked at these and I'm I just don't know that that's really what we should be doing.
Yes, so so I think what I'd like to do is go through the strategies and and for each one, it's kind of like stay or go. Stay, go, mention it in the chapter, move it to another chapter. Those are kind of the four options. So you guys want to do that? Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I was just going to mention, I think, you know, getting along a little bit with Aaron's comments, if if we decide we've left that we're going to. Leave out the living wage, then goal number one on the goals page would also go away. So that would be one of those, you know, it, you know, that that goal is meaningful work and living wages, so. If it's not in the aspiration and we don't have strategies, then that goal would go away and the other ones would just get promoted up one. So just so we're. As we're, as we get to the end, and I before I forget, just to point out that if we make that decision, then that one goes away too.
Okay, yeah, so let's do it. Let's make that decision. The first three. And the first grouping of of strategies are livable wages study, livable business marketing program and livable wage incentive policy. Who's in favor of just removing those and not focusing on that in the plan? Is that is that where we are?
Well, you've heard my opinion about it. I I think.
Okay, so Aaron, Marcel and Jeff, what do you what do you think about removing?
Well, I think on the incentive policy. Like we talk about. Um, TIF and tax stabilization and stuff elsewhere, don't we? I'm blanking on where, but that's come up before.
Yeah, it's used in a number of places, including, you know, if you were just encouraging more job growth.
Yeah.
There are a number of places where we have those. The question is. And we actually do already have this in our tax stabilization program. There actually already is. You know, a a thing in there for livable wage. And again, and let me remind you and anyone in the public. These these three you see here. I was given, we're going to have livable wage. So I tried to come up with using our five Ps. What are the things that we could do? And I'm not encouraging us to do any of these or discouraging us. Just these are things we could do just to help shape people's thoughts of. If we wanted to do a livable wage, these are some of the things that we could do that would help to advance that and not saying, you know. Whether we should or shouldn't, but and I think I actually missed one. The city actually has a livable wage policy. They already have right now to make sure that all city employees earn a livable wage. So.
I mean, I think I think that's that stuff sounds fine and it's like just just if we omit it, it doesn't mean that we're like, you know, wanting to go the opposite direction on the pre existing things. You know, it's fine that those things exist. It's just a matter of where we want to want to focus. I see us like funneling city money towards things that. Provide a livable wage is just a backdoor way of saying that we're not going to support service. Industry stuff and we're going to support every other type of industry. Like manufacturing or something would qualify for the special treatment. But that service won't. And that's effectively what that means. So is that what we want?
Is that what that means? And no, I don't think we want that.
I mean, the the end result is that. Service like like, you know, like retail businesses like don't have enough margins to pay these kinds of wages, so. We're not going to get the TIF and the and the. The special tax treatment.
And not only service, but I'm imagining that at least at current rates, like home care and stuff like that. Maybe disincentivized or not prioritized, and that's something that is definitely a priority for the state right now, sort of senior services and child services and all that.
That's true. Child childcare businesses, yeah, probably wouldn't pay enough to.
Yeah, I guess it's just sort of my question about this. I mean, I feel like the first two strategies. And they're pretty amorphous. I don't know what they really mean, but the. The incentive policy one, I'm just, it seems like there might be some value in it. I just don't know how feasible it is. So. I mean, I don't have a strong opinion on it. I just don't have the knowledge to really weigh in on it, but to the extent that it would be feasible. It would have an impact. I would support leaving it in, but. It sounds like there are other people here that understand it better than I do. But it sounds like there are other people here that understand it better than I do.
Yeah, I guess the example that I think I've given in the past for the, for like the tax stabilization is that it, the question is, is it really helping to make sure that folks who wouldn't otherwise provide a livable wage, does it give them an encouragement to provide a livable wage? Or are we just giving a tax break to somebody who is leasing to somebody who is, you know, the point of the livable wage is to help people who are in the lower incomes move up into, you know, into a livable category. And if what we create and give tax breaks for are jobs that require bachelor's and master's degrees, and, you know, the folks who are not earning a livable wage don't have a chance of getting these jobs. And so they end up in a position where we're just giving, you know, we're giving breaks and incentives. And that's not necessarily a bad thing from the business side of things, maybe. You know, any tax stabilization that brings more businesses to town is good. But, you know, we won't give, we won't give a tax incentive. As you said, we won't give a tax incentive to help a daycare because you're not going to pay a livable wage. But we will give it to a company to come in and bring additional insurance jobs. Now, there's nothing wrong with additional insurance jobs. We love the additional insurance jobs, but they're going to get a tax break and the daycare and the childcare won't.
I think we should, let's, let's, can we, can we note that to maybe make an exception in the tax stabilization for new childcare businesses? I think, I think maybe we should get very ambitious, at least, like everything that we can offer, I think we maybe should for childcare businesses.
That would be cool. I mean, does that go, we got, we got a section on childcare, is that our spot? Or that's something to kick over to the people working on that?
Yeah, I think Kirby's suggestion would be good down under childcare to kind of go through and highlight that as an opportunity to provide tax stabilizations to providers of these services.
I mean, I would, I would add TIFs, if, to whatever extent that that's ever relevant. Maybe they already do.
Yeah, TIF probably wouldn't apply too much, but tax stabilizations and other economic development revolving loan funds, the RLF is revolving loan funds, which we do have, and we can establish programs to help those. And as we get down to those other ones, I can explain what are some of the things cities can do to help businesses.
I think it's a good idea. I think, I think we should move it down under childcare, whether it ends up in our plan or another plan. That's a, that was a great, that was a great thought, Kirby.
I think, I think there's a lot, there's a lot of other thoughts we could have too, when it comes to that.
But the three livable wages here, go?
It sounds like that's actually everyone's heading. Anyone want to advocate for keeping any of the three in? Okay, so we'll just put those, put those aside now, remove that for now.
I'll highlight them in red so that way we can know which ones were discussed and removed and which ones were discussed and kept.
Okay. And then, so the next thing is workforce development. This is like stay or go, it's a new idea, it's like written by Mike.
If I could jump in.
Yeah, got you.
How does this intersect with the thing on the ballot tomorrow about, you know, careers? What is it, Washington County Career or something? I'm just wondering how this sort of a strategy intersects with other regional, even state programs.
Well, I know the Department of Labor has some pretty outstanding programs, and they've got a lot of funding that comes in from the federal government to do some of that. And so, you know, with what maybe, I don't know. I mean, is it just, does the state have robust enough functions that we don't need to, need to do that? I think, I think I wrote some of this that Mike maybe tweaked it.
Yeah, I think this was originally about four or five different pieces. We had originally had this out, as you can see up top, this is the revised PC template economic. And I think the original one, this was a number of different options. And I kind of went through and said, well, let's think of workforce development as a program because most of this, we're not doing the education and training. We're just gonna try to connect people to that education and training. And, and I'm, I'm not sure if this is the right way or the best way to do it. Or, you know, as you said, if there's a lot of these good programs out there, and I, I think the programs are pretty good that are out there. I think the issue, and there's, there's conversation, taking this a little bit of a step back. There is a conversation in the community development, in the housing, in the housing task force, homelessness task force, and the social and economic justice that they want. Unfortunately, we keep getting the term hub used a lot. And, you know, there's a hub that's looking to do the development at Elks Club. But there also was a discussion of using, of having a economic development hub. And it was, what it meant was, hoped to do is that it was going to be a facility where, you know, maybe there's a, let's say, a homeless shelter. But you could also come in and get connections to services. And the city would have a community development person who would help connect you to the services. We wouldn't necessarily provide services, but we have people that would help to connect you if you're homeless and you need housing, and need housing assistance. We can get you in touch with housing assistance folks. And if you need job training, we can get you connected to the job training. I know there's a discussion that those groups, those committees are having, but I haven't been a part of it. And I'm hoping to get more when I meet with Cameron about some of the details of that. So this, we're kind of looking at the workforce development, but I could see how it could also simply fall into that same umbrella that they're talking about of, you know, can we do more to help connect people? You know, we have a lot of people with needs and there's a lot of services out there. And can we find ways of connecting?
And I'm not sure how much it shows up further down below. I mean, in the, in the version that I wrote, I had, I had some of this, right? Like connecting with, you're talking, but then also further down, as we're talking about, you know, you know, business building, like that economic development officer can also be somebody who is, knows where the resources are for entrepreneurs. And we've done some of that. I don't know all the details of it. I know there were some grants that were given, you know, particularly targeting like BIPOC communities to try to help them get launched. I know the city was involved in that. But the idea of having a single person that was sort of the resource for economic development, I mean, the equivalent of Mike, but economic development that can support, you know, all of our efforts and the people in the community, was kind of the thinking.
So what are people thinking? Do we, do we want to change this?
I guess I like the idea. I'm not sure whether it would be sort of a city strategic plan goal or strategy. I'm being redundant here, but it's, you know, something that could come up in council or whatever. It doesn't need to be written down in a, in a long-term plan.
Mike, what do you think about addressing workforce development in a way in which we're, you know, being careful with resources, I guess? Not reinventing the wheel, it's already being done by the state or elsewhere.
I think, I think if workforce development is important, then we should, I don't know what else we could do for workforce development, to be honest with you. As it comes to educating folks and getting them prepared for that next job, I think this is one of the few things we could do. I think what I would do is, is leave it here and maybe, remember, we're going to eventually prioritize these. We might just put it as a low priority compared to the other things that we're going to do. And maybe that gets elevated as C-JAC and Homelessness Task Force get talking about things that, you know, if it becomes more of a reality that they're going to have this homelessness, community justice, opportunity hub, then, okay. It would kind of make sense that we would layer this in, at least, at least the workforce development side might layer in. So if somebody were to contact City Hall and say, hey, I'm, you know, I'm new to town, I'm unemployed, I'm trying to find out where to go, we can say, hey, you can contact the hub and they can help coordinate to get you in touch with, you know, all the services. Because we have a lot. I mean, you know, we have CCV here, we've got VoC rehab, we've got adult education, we've got all the state Department of Labor things. You know, we're very fortunate being Montpelier, you don't have to go very far to get, to find the help. You just have to figure out which door to knock on.
Okay, I'm, I'm.
I would leave it.
Okay.
And maybe it gets reworked later on. Again, none of these are final. Maybe this is a good idea that makes it for a certain amount of time.
Anybody have anything else before we move on? Okay, housing is the next one. Obviously redundant with our entire chapter on it. But, so for the economic development aspect, we have a strategy of housing, marketing, and outreach program. What are people's thoughts on this?
So I'll point out this was actually, this actually is cut and paste from the housing chapter. So this was when we talked about housing, what we can do for, to increase housing. This was proposed, to have a housing, marketing, and outreach program with all this information. So this is.
You know, as somebody who's trying to do development in the city, I'd love to participate if we can, you know, and get plugged in additional resources.
So if it's a strategy that's already in housing, though, like what we've been doing so far, like assuming we're going to stick with the same format, is we would reference that in the narrative chapter, but not have the strategy here?
No, we would, we would have the strategy here. But what you see over in column N is that G2. So when John built out that Excel program, when this all gets dropped into that Excel program, it gets linked, so you're only going to see this once, but it'll show up multiple times as you go through and say.
Okay.
As you, as you ask questions, it keeps showing up. But the key is that it's gonna show up once because it's only in G2.
Okay, I think I understand what you, what you mean, is that.
Yeah, these, these other ones.
It's not going to look redundant based on how it's put together at the end.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the ones that we pulled out and removed were the support ones that are above it. Those were the ones, we talked about them before, we said, let's just pull these right out.
Won't it, won't it officially be a strategy that's linked to one chapter or the other, though?
Nope, it'll be, it'll be in both.
Okay.
And so the way, for Gabe and Jeff's benefit, it's remarkable. John is, John's a genius at this stuff, so you really got to go and see him working at his finest. He works for the state GIS stuff. So he's got all of the technology stuff. And what he did is he dropped these into this Excel program that basically pulls, pulls data around and it turns everything into cards. So you could then go through and query and say, show me all of the ones on economic development. Show me all the strategies for economic development. Show me all the economic development strategies for workforce development. Show me all of the strategies that are implemented by the community just, you know, the community development specialist, which, you know, another one of these columns over here says, who is doing it? So we could actually query in this plan, how many things is the planning director doing? How many things is the city manager doing? How many things is this committee doing? You could actually query, and it just pulls up all the cards depending on what questions you ask. And the tasks, because you'll see the downtown program appears in all three of the things, all three of the goals for historic preservation and also appears here in economic development, it also appears in housing. So the downtown program, TIF program, tax stabilization program, they appear all over the place. But they're going to show up in this plan. But when it actually gets to the city plan, there'll be one card that'll say tax stabilization program. It'll describe the tax stabilization program, and then there's going to be a tab which would tell you all the places where this program is used to implement a different goal.
Okay, that, that, I mean, that sounds, that sounds fine, that sounds fine. I was just trying to make sure that we are following the same spirit that we have been. But, yeah, that, that sounds like that'll be great. So does anyone have anything more on housing?
Build, baby, build.
Yeah, I mean, we do have the, we have the entire chapter that has many, many strategies. Okay, so then childcare is the next one. There's some, there's this, there's this language that says use in chapter, not implementation plan. So we didn't have any strategies for the implementation plan. But based on what Mike just said, we can have whatever strategies exist in community services could also be linked here then, under the same approach.
So the reason I pulled the housing one forward is because that one was very specifically about getting to housing developers and trying to, so there was a much more stronger economic link. But yeah, in theory, we could pull all the childcare ones forward and link them here. And maybe once we start to build this out, it becomes, or makes more sense to kind of go through and say, hey, let's just click all these guys into this, there's only going to be one card anyways, so we might as well link all the childcare ones also to economic development.
Okay.
We'll understand that more as we start building out the website.
Okay, so let's, let's plan to do that, and let's also plan to make sure that what we said earlier about the RLF and tax stabilization applies to the childcares, applies to childcare businesses. And I imagine, once we get to community services, there'll be a lot more strategies for that. Who's working on that again? Is that Cameron?
For childcare, yeah, I believe Cameron's going to be working on that one.
Okay. And, okay, so I trust that Cameron kind of knows the gist of what.
Way more than I do.
But, but like the format wise, like the format we're doing and.
I'm working with her on that. So I'm working with Dan and Cameron at the same time.
Okay. All right. Does anyone have anything else about childcare or strategies you want to, you want to flag? Or we'll be tackling it again under community services, apparently. Okay, transportation and land use. So these are two other things that are just flagged for us to talk about in the chapter, but I'll take the mutation plan. Again, we have, we already have the transportation chapter done, we don't have the land use. But I guess there's potential there to also have, have some shared strategies. Mike, did you happen to look at the transportation plan to see if any of them could be clocked out that would apply to workforce stuff?
No, most of the ones I would, would be probably tied to the public transportation. So maybe some of the My Ride things. We could, we can be more careful about going through and more carefully applying other goals, I think, later on as we get in the process.
Okay.
It's always tough to do this because, you know, I might put in three hours of work to come up with a whole bunch of them and then have you guys decide you don't want to have that strategy in there. And then it didn't make a lot of sense to do all that work. So some of us are a little bit iterative to kind of come through and say, let's see where we're at. When we get to the end, then we can kind of go through and pull a few more pieces back in.
Okay, yeah, I just quickly pulled up the transportation chapter and looked at the strategies. And it seems like there's some room, like the, I don't know, the Complete Streets Initiative is related, if we wanted to.
Yeah, the Complete Streets would tie into the land use. That goes into the fact that if we have compact mixed-use development, that if you don't have a car, you don't, i- if you have a mixed-use neighborhood and you don't have a car, you don't need a car. I mean, our goal, our primary goal in the transportation chapter is that you can live and work in Montpelier without a car, that you can live and work in Montpelier without a car. The compromise in that is there were some people that wanted no cars and some people that wanted, and the compromise was, let's just make a city where you can have cars, if you want cars, go for it. But it shouldn't be a necessity. It shouldn't be, if you want to live in Montpelier, you have to own. But it shouldn't be a necessity. It shouldn't be, if you want to live in Montpelier, you have to own a car. And 90% of our country, in our communities in the United States, if you don't have a car, you're, you know, you're, you're really in trouble because you can't get the doctor's appointments, things aren't walkable. So by making a walkable mixed use neighborhood, if you can't afford a car or you have physical reasons why you can't drive a car, you can still live and work in Montpelier and be successful.
So we, we also have a couple, we have a couple of, um, strategies that go to public transportation as well. Shared mobility is the phrase we use there. Which could possibly be linked here. There's one that the initiative to subsidize public transit and shared mobility for low income residents could, seems relevant. So we can just keep that in mind as, as some shared strategies. Um, okay. So with that, we can move on to the resilient business environment. Uh, we have several strategies here. What are our thoughts about these?
Well, there are a lot of them here, so we should probably just.
You want to take them one by one?
Either take them one by one. Yeah.
So economic development strategic plan, that's happening. Um, so that's.
That's in the budget to get done. Yeah.
Yeah. Um, public education outreach regarding economic development. This seems tied into the, this, the new staff, the economic development officer work, right? What do people think about this strategy?
I think as long as we have a clear person to do it or section to do it, there's nothing wrong with outreach and education.
Okay. Can you, you like that one, Mike?
Yeah. I mean, it's one of these ones I was not.
I mean, yeah.
Big. I mean, it's not a really big thing, but I mean, i- if, if it stays in, I'd be like, that's a low priority. Um, you know, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be putting it ahead of some other things.
Okay. Seems fine by me unless anyone wants to speak up to remove it. Um, the next one's unified development regulations. Yeah, mixing zoning, expanding your zoning. That's, that seems fine. I mean, it kind of goes without saying, but I'm going to just move on. So people can speak up if they, if they have thoughts on any of these designated downtown program. That's something that's, that's happening, that's continuing. Uh, the growth center program is a continuing thing. Um, I feel like maybe John Adams has been the one that's spoken out against like, I don't know, against continuing stuff, but I don't want to put words in his mouth about that. Uh, neighborhood development area program is a new thing.
Yeah. I mean, I still think, uh, you know, I, John would say that, you know, my, my point is I think if we're, if we get stuff into his, his format with his cards, we'll have a whole set of stuff that might be, these are things that we already do that we're going to continue doing. And I think there's value to the public and if, if all the public sees is things we're doing that are new, then this, then the public doesn't see all the things we're already doing. And that was one of the reasons why I wanted to put in these things that we're doing and why we continue to do them. Because if the, if the public's like, we are not doing anything about affordable housing. And it's like, well, actually we've got 12 things that we're already doing that we're continuing to do and we're going to be adding one or two more down here.
Okay.
But if all they see is we're doing one or two things, they think you're not doing enough. This is all you're doing are these two things. So.
Okay. I want, I want to make sure we get through this. I'm going to speed it up a bit because I, I just realized that we have, uh, a little bit more than 20 minutes left. So, so neighborhood development area program. So I'm, I'm fine with the continuings for the record. Uh, neighborhood development area program. Everyone seem all right with that? And then the next one's continue the efficient and predictable regulations. Uh, seems tied with the zoning bylaws mentioned above. Next one's eliminate, our elimination of business equipment tax. This is new. Montpelier is one of few communities that has a separate business equipment tax on top of the property tax. So yeah, this is business personal property tax.
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, my, I love how my day job intersects with all this stuff in the most boring ways possible. So this, this puts the city at a competitive advantage. So, so that seems fine to me. Do we have any idea what kind of revenue comes from that?
Actually generates enough revenue. That's the hard part. Um, it's hard to give up that revenue once you've got it, because you have to balance it by increasing revenue on everybody else. So it's basically a shift from commercial to residential. And that's been, that's been the, that's been the sticking point with it. Um, but it's a real issue.
Do we know of employers that have chosen or not have their businesses here because of that tax?
Yeah.
We do. Yeah. Okay.
There are folks, I mean, when I was working in Berry City, it was one of our big selling points was we would always.
Oh, you did? You sold against Montpelier.
Oh yeah. We would, when I was over there, it was like, hey, you know, why, why are you guys going to pay business, you know, probably taxes? It's actually why, if you're curious, um, the Times Argus was all printed in Berry City and it had the, it was over there because the, the printing presses were so expensive that having the, um, printing presses in Montpelier would have put them out. So they, they were over, they stayed over there for as long as they could, until they ended up, I guess now printing down in Rutland.
Sounds like a good thing to leave in and have some nice public debate about.
It's, it's, I mean, I think if we're, we can't really talk about economic development without having that as, as a thing. And it's not going to affect everybody. But as we talk about it, it was something for Caledonian spirits to con- to consider as they were choosing Montpelier.
My, my concern is if the revenue is significant, it's going to be made up somewhere. It's not like we're going to cut the budget somewhere. And so you're looking at maybe the municipal property tax increasing.
Yeah.
Which makes, which makes living here harder, or at least owning a home here harder.
But if we suggest cutting, do we, if we suggested this, would we also have to suggest where to make up the revenue? I mean, that may be nice of us, but is that part of what we have to do in the plan?
We, we wouldn't, but for that strategy to actually be achieved, that would have to be done.
Right.
And there might have to be some of the discussion that goes into the, either the chap- chapter text, or maybe as this gets developed as its card, that we reflect that other piece of, you know, the other thing to consider is that this would increase, you know, the tax rates by this much. Um, we've talked about it from time to time, you know, among the department heads of like, if this were to happen, this piece, this would happen if we did, let's say a local options tax. So we do a local options tax that adds a 1% on, it's going to raise, I don't know, $600, $700,000. And then we go through and say, yeah, but as, as a, as a thing back to the business community, we can get rid of this. This other tax which hurts our ability to be competitive and therefore, you know, it doesn't raise any residential property taxes because it's all being taken up by the, the local options tax. But again, it's, I think if it happens, it happens because it's a piece of a bigger puzzle of, of things that come up.
Um, Mike, I have a question. I haven't looked at that in forever. Do you happen to off the top of your head whether the city gets to decide the rate for the personal property tax, in which case we could have a strategy of lowering it, but not completely eliminating it?
I'd have to get more details. I believe, I believe it's our taxes, um, because it's at zero. So I think it's something that we could raise or lower or exempt more items or different items. I think, I think it'll probably, I imagine if it went to the city council, we'd probably be looking at a little bit more of a study of, you know, who's, who's impacted? Has it, has it really hurt Montpelier having this tax here? Have we really lost business? And I honestly can't tell you who, who didn't.
Could we, could we, could we change the strategy to, to study it, to study alternatives to it? Or study alternatives to it and consider eliminating it?
That probably makes more sense.
Everybody okay with that? Okay. So, uh, yeah. So we're still, we're running out of time. Um, study alternatives to the, uh, current property tax system. It's been an idea discussed for a while.
That's a John. That's John's idea.
This was, we had a conversation in our subgroup, remember talking about this, that we have a bunch of vacant land. This is a real, we have a real issue, right? With, I mean, I was looking at a parcel the other day that's just completely underutilized, ridiculous. Uh, and so should there be some kind of levy? You know, when, when buildings are underutilized. I know it's not a popular concept, but boy, we've got some people just sitting on a lot of stuff that could really, you know, help the community.
I know the, the roadblock is, is state law. I mean, city, the city does not have control over state, the state laws and how property taxes work. So.
Yeah. Act 60 and Act 68 kind of make it very difficult to decide you're going to have a different tax system.
You could have a different, you could have some other kind of tax, right? I mean, the city could have a tax penalty or something. I don't, I, you know, I don't know. John knew all the details on how they do these things other places, but I think that was kind of the idea, Mike. Maybe you could go back and look and see. Or maybe we just wait till John's background.
John and I have had this discussion a number of times and it's like a theoretically like very interesting idea, but when you actually start looking at the way Vermont laws work, I have a hard time seeing how you get there without like drastically changing state law. But yeah, we, we can continue talking about it. And if there is like a workaround thing where we can kind of get at what he wants to do, which is to incentivize development of desirable, you know, property that's, that's underutilized. Yeah. I, I, I think that's what we need to explore though. It's like how to, how to, how to do the gist of what he's saying, but that, but, but the specific way that he pitches it, I don't, I see as like legally really hard, if not like improbable.
Yeah. I, I have my issues with it too, but I'll let it roll onto the next stuff so we can try to get done.
Yeah. Um, okay. So let's, I don't know. What are we going to flag that one as?
I get yellow. I'll do some research too and see what some other cities have done. I know, I know other people are doing it and everybody.
I, I would like just, we'll, we'll move on, but I, I would like if that, um, strategy, uh, were to emphasize the actual policy goal that John's getting at, which is to encourage development of vacant lots.
Right.
And, and do, do that through taxes or incentives or something.
Right.
Um, okay. So the next one's entrepreneurship, job attraction and expansion. Can it, we have a continue with the regional partners. We have a new one that's business development program. That's related to what we talked about above with the economic development officer.
Yeah. This one's targeting, talking to the business owners and the property owners though, as opposed to talking to the folks who are in the labor side.
Yep. So that, that all seems to make sense. If we're doing one of those, we, this should, this would be a compliment to the, to the other one.
So a lot of these functions, just, just so you know, a lot of these functions are, of, of these functions here, not the functions above, are done by our community and economic development specialists down in my office. So if you need support for grant writing, grant administration, other technical, applying for VITA, brownfield revitalization, veggie, all that blah, blah, blah stuff. That's all stuff that we will currently do. So there's some of this that's new and some of it that's a continuation. So.
Are you, are you, are you, now that you're working for Montpelier, are you selling that service to the businesses?
Yes, yes. I, I drag down Berry City as every time I can.
Can that one, can that one person assume the information, you know, the role up above that's kind of directing people to services to, or is that, is he a, he or she have enough work to do just with what they're already doing?
The community development specialist is the one who basically focuses on mostly housing programs. So a lot of that stuff. So he's, he's pretty busy right now. Um, and that's a job that's actually, he's leaving and that's been posted. Um, so it's a job opening right now at the city to replace that, to replace Kevin. But yeah, he did all these other lower, lower ones down here. So maybe I should change that to say new continue.
Okay. Um, that's, seems great. Uh, tax stabilization continue. That's pretty straightforward. Uh, Montpelier Economic Development revolving loan fund. Why is this new?
Um, get my cursor back to where I was here. Um, it keeps rolling. Uh, so we do have some funds. So we have a Montpelier Economic Development revolving loan fund. So what we had for a number of years was it was all housed at the, you know, kind of in the state, state of Vermont RLFs, which used to be formerly federal dollars that had come to the states, had gone to the municipality. We had recycled it. So we had loaned the money out and gotten payments back. So we had money. And then there reached a point where the state was saying, if you guys aren't going to use it, we're going to take it back. So we simply repurposed them and that was allowed. We didn't do anything wrong. By taking them out of the RLF, it meant this, the, the state couldn't claw that money back anymore. But we still have the money and now we're creating our own revolving loan fund. So Kevin did all the work to kind of close out. Uh, one of our biggest ones was the Capitol Plaza RLF. So in 1992, after the big flood, Capitol Plaza, you know, the Besheras came in, got Capitol Plaza, they got a loan. And as they paid those, those loans back, they became the Capitol Plaza RLF. So we now just have that money. Um, we loaned, I think almost all of it out to Caledonian spirits. Because they needed to have new water lines put in. So we loaned that out and I think it's only like a five year loan. So we'll get that money back. So we still have revolving loan funds, but we don't have any programs. So we kind of have this, this thing. We've got money, but we don't have anything to market because we don't have any program. So what we need is, and this is what the new person, when they come in, he or she comes in, we're going to kind of say, hey, we've got this pot of funds. What's the best way to multiply this money? How do we make this money make the biggest bang for its buck? But we, what we need first are, are goals, what we're working on right now. What is the most important thing for us to work on? Well, then we can write an RLF that targets that money to our highest priorities. So that's where, you know, it's in here to kind of say, we've got this revolving loan fund. Let's talk about how we can, how we can do it. So the revolving loan fund is new, the money is very old. Money's 30, 40 years old, but, um, that's a little bit of background on that.
Is it, is it, is it a no interest loan?
It could be whatever we want. It's our money. It's, it's.
Like, like for Caledonia spirits, was it a no?
Ah, I don't know. They're.
Okay. It's, it's, it's just, just curious.
Yeah. Their loan actually, actually their loan may have been a little bit different. Their loan may have been, because it was for the water line. And, uh, it may actually come out of their water fee. So we may have actually kind of loaned it to our water department. Our water department fixed the, the lines. So they could get a really big customer and then they're going to take the money from the increased thing. So I'm act, we're actually going to get it paid back from the water fund, not from Caledonia spirits.
Okay.
In this case, but like I said, in the future, we could have a number of different programs.
So that sounds like it was effectively no interest, the way that worked. Okay.
And that one, it was probably zero or low, no interest loans.
Um, uh, okay. So, uh, let's, let's try to get, I don't think we're going to finish, but we'll see. Uh, then, so, so that's, that's good. Seems good. It's not like anybody's, um, has any problem with that. Uh, the next one's the development, the building stock utilities, facilities section, uh, outdoor recreation, promotion program. Um, and this, this is, uh, from the parks director. This is like in line with what he wants to do. This is good. I don't know when we get to the community services stuff about parks, if we're going to try to share some strategies, but I guess that's, there's some potential for that. Um, this is good. I don't know when we get to the Community Services stuff about parks, if we're gonna try to share some strategies, but I guess that's, there's some potential for that. Um, does anybody, is everybody okay with those? Um, then then.
Yeah, I had to find, I had to find a place to put his recommendations, a number of his recommendations, I thought, kind of fell under facilities. So I kind of put it under the Building, Building Stock Utilities and Facilities, because a lot of his kind of fell into that category.
Yeah, I don't think he's going to have a problem with where it goes. Uh, and then, um, so the Partner With The Neighbors, I remember, yeah, he had a lot of stuff in his presentation about that. Uh, you, you tagged this one as Using Chapter On Implementation Plan?
Yeah, a lot of these, when we'd had these in other chapters, when we talk about, let's, you know, we'll have a, you know, uh, natural resources. We should partner with the, you know, Winuski Basin, whatevers. We kind of, we didn't put those as strategies because there's nothing to do. Um, that's just something we talk about. That's just part of doing your job is partnering with your, your, your folks, so.
Okay, that sounds good.
Should be discussed. Let's just put it in the chapter. It's not really a strategy.
Um, that's, yeah, that sounds good. So then below that is the Green Print Implementation Program.
I cut and pasted this from the Natural Resources Plan.
Um. But I think, I think this seems fine and seems relevant. Yeah. Uh.
A lot of it comes down to, we're again, talking about facilities, and this was their plan to expand the park facility. If you think of the, the parks in the trail system as a facility. Then their green print plan was their plan that, how do we connect Hubbard Park to U32? To, um, you know, uh, up to Morse Farm, out to, uh, into downtown, across the river. And out towards North Field, you know, how do we, how do we connect all these trails together? Well, the, the Parks Department has a green print plan, which helps to connect. They have nodes of things, and then they have trails that would connect everything.
So, I mean, I, I, it's a, it's a very broad, very progressive way of looking at. In the context of facilities that businesses need as being a bunch of trails, but I like it. Everybody good with that? Okay, uh, so TIF, Continue TIF, that seems straightforward, and then Economic. Uh, and then the, and then there's this one about how utilities and facilities has crossover, which is fine. Um, and then we have Vibrant Downtowns. This is where Economic Development and. Complete Streets, so Transportation more or less overlap there. Um, Streetscape Improvement, Continue, To Continue. A City Tourism Marketing Program Continue, Montpelier Alive. We, at one point, we had a Increased Montpelier Alive's Budget Strategy. Is that gone?
Yeah, we generally haven't had those in as strategies. I think we usually will talk about things directly. If there's something very specific that's targeted to them.
Can, can we just add the word expand at the beginning there, just to emphasize that, you know, we're doing a good job. We'd like to do, we'd like to do more.
With the Tourism Marketing?
Yeah, just expand City and Tourism Marketing Program.
Yeah, we don't, I don't think we talk about like increasing budgets anywhere else, so that would kind of get around it.
Okay, there you go. Expand, and then Continue Expand, very good. And then the last thing is the Hotel and Parking Garage Project, and if there's momentum for this, I'm like, I'm fine with having this as something we want to still do. Um, do you have other thoughts?
I don't know if we would put this in the plan per se, but is there, I mean, I just wouldn't want it to be a repeat of what happened before. I'm, I am in favor of that type of a project, but I would want to do it in a way that wouldn't end us up right back here. I don't know if we can control that really in the plan, but.
Yeah, I think it's, I put it in there based on trying to capture a little bit of, um, you know, when we talk about vibrant downtowns. You know, our big push was. Um, you know, a part of our vibrant downtowns we have right now is during the day, we had a lot of workers. Unfortunately, from COVID, that's been an, that's been an issue. So we kind of had this nine-to-five vibrant downtown because of everybody working here. 6,000 people work in Montpelier, or 9,000 people work in Montpelier. Um, so we get a lot of vibrancy during the day, and then at night, um, it drops off quite a bit. But some of that word we were trying to capture was from our tourists and getting more people in here to spend time. And, um, and that was the big push for hotels. So if, if one of our goals, if one of our sectors is we really want to have a good vibrant tourist economy, then we're going to have to have more hotels. And if that's not important, then don't worry about the hotel and parking garage. It really kind of comes down to, if we want more tourists. Unless people are going to drive in and leave, we're never going to capture people and capture their, you know, if we're talking economics, we're not going to capture their money.
No, I, I think it's important. I don't think we're gonna, I mean, we can leave it here for now. I don't think it's actually a strategy what's listed there. I mean, it's what we hope, but I, I hope it's not a strategy, right?
Sure.
Yeah, yeah. Do we talk about tourism in any other chapter?
Um, not so much, I mean.
I guess it would be the economic one, one that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay, I guess, to be honest, I hadn't thought about it before, so.
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
Going off of what Gabe said, maybe we can reword this strategy to be more proactive. And, um, to seek. To seek a project like this. Um. And then, and then, and then leave it. Um, okay, so we're out of time. This is what I'm thinking that we can do. I went ahead and updated that aspiration. There's a few other little updates and tinkering that we talked about to do. How about we try to, uh, um. Get that stuff polished up and done before the next meeting? We won't go through it again. We'll just vote at the next meeting to approve the goals, aspirations and strategies. Uh, and then we'll move on to whatever, um, other chapter from there that we'll, so, so we'll have plenty of time after doing that. But it will be the, the la- like a last minute chance if anybody has any goal, aspiration, strategy stuff to do that we haven't discussed yet for Economic Development. So we'll plan to vote next time. Uh, try to polish it up before that meeting, uh, so we have like a clean version of what we're voting on. Um, and then, and then go on to the next chapter, which is, which will be one.
And I'll try to work on, um, writing the written Economic Development Chapter, so that's would be.
Right.
That hopefully we have. So usually we do the implementation strategies, then we go and do the chapters. Um, sometimes I'll have them both done at the same time, but in this case, we hit them one at a time.
And I'll, I'll plan to, Mike, if, yeah, Mike, if you draft it, I'll plan to also go through and, and work on it. So hopefully we'll be able to just knock out both with quick votes next time.
I'm happy to do that as well, run the chapter, give it a read.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds good. Maybe we can both do it. Um. Okay, so do we have a motion to adjourn? We have a plan for next week. Uh, just real quick, Mike, what do you, what, just we know to expect, what other chapter do you think might be ready next time?
Uh, well.
We get Start Arts?
The, the Economic Development Chapter.
Mm-hmm.
Written, the written chapter part we'll have. Um. Trying to think about what is the date of our next meeting we would be.
Um. It's, it's going to be the 14th of March.
I don't know if I'll have much else. Um, I'll, I'll be working with the Community Services, but we won't have that done. The Economic Development Housing is basically done. I can, I will also then try to. Um, I've got utilities and facilities mostly done, and maybe I'll have to make that, put that on the, higher up on my list to get that, that wrapped up as well.
Well, I mean, we can be, we can be kind of modest about it, and we, if you want to start in utilities, we can just do the aspirations and goals, and you know. Um, so keep it. Keep it a little contained that way.
Yeah.
So, let's, let's, let's plan to do that then. Um, okay, sounds good. Sounds like we have, you know what we're going to be doing next time. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Motion from Gabe. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, you were, you look like you were going to do that. Uh, second from Marcella. Uh, those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, we are adjourned. See you March 14th.
Adios.
Thanks.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Mike.